Welcome to the January 28th regular meeting of the Board of Education. My name is Anupam Chugsidhu and I want to thank everyone for being here tonight. Before we get started, I just want to give a quick update and this is with Member Savage's permission. He has been out for a couple of months dealing with some health challenges and he was hoping that he could be here today. But it looks like he still needs some time to recover, so we send him all the best and wish that he has a smooth recovery. And we look forward to having him back when he's ready. So I just wanted to let people know, I know some of you were wondering, so that, let everyone know. So with that, I would like my board colleagues to introduce themselves, starting on my left.
Hi, good evening. My name is John Lazardz. Thank you for coming out tonight.
Patty McCoyn, so nice to see so many people here today.
Good evening, Patrick Keo, thanks for joining us.
Thanks for coming out, Doug Brooks.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Kate Borninski. Thanks for coming.
Ms. Merritt, would you like to walk us through your staff?
Good evening and welcome. I'd like to begin by introducing my assistant, Ms. Diane Robertson, and thank her for taking the minutes this evening. Also, the man behind the scenes, Charlie Jones. He takes care of our video production so that community members that are not able to be present have the opportunity to see the business of the board. I'd like to ask the remaining staff members to introduce themselves to you, beginning with Mr. Brandon.
Good evening, Nick Brandon, Executive Director of Communications and Marketing. It's good to see everybody.
Hi, I'm Debbie Piaz. I'm the Chief Finance and Operations Officer. Welcome.
Welcome to all, Liz Vartanion-Gibbs, Assistant Superintendent.
Good evening, Kurt Tiskowitz, Executive Director of Student Services. Thanks for being here tonight.
Good evening, Beth Rail, Chief Academic Officer, and welcome.
Good evening, Heather Fitchpatrick, Education Association President.
Wonderful. We have a couple of students from Plymouth and Salem that are going to lead the Pledge of Allegiance with us, so please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Alright, we are moving on to Item A. I'm looking for a motion for the adoption of the agenda, approval of the consent agenda.
At the President, I move that we adopt the agenda and approve of the consent agenda. Action Item 2001-34.
I second it.
Thank you. Motion was made by Member Brooks, seconded by Member Lizarowicz. Ms. Merritt, would you like to walk us through the consent agenda?
Yes, thank you. This evening, the consent agenda consists of human resources transactions since the last time we were together. We have new hires, leaves, and resignations for your consideration this evening, as well as the approval of minutes from our special meeting on January 21st, 2020, as well as our regular minutes from January 14th, I'm sorry, 2020.
On favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Motion passes. Six-zero for the adoption of the agenda, approval of the consent agenda, action item number 20-01-34.
Good evening. At this time, I would like to introduce you to three new teachers in our school district, so come on out. Samaya. Right there, you're good, nice. Okay, awesome. First, I want to introduce you to Samaya Bedu. And Samaya is going to be a new art teacher here in our district. She's going to be an elementary art teacher at Erickson School and Field School, and she completed her student teaching here with us during the 18-19 school year. And she comes to us with a bachelor's degree from Madonna College. So congratulations, Samaya. Cassandra Futurelli.
It's fine. I'm gonna let her go.
Congratulations.
Welcome, congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations, welcome. When I was on the phone with Samaya, she was so excited that she could not wait to get off the phone so she could go talk to her mom. So that was really sweet. Okay, Cassandra Futurelli is going to be our new English language teacher at Dotson School. Cassandra completed her student teaching with us during the fall of 2019, and she comes to us with a bachelor's degree from Eastern Michigan University. So congratulations, Cassandra.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, you're welcome.
Congratulations. You're welcome. Next, I would like to introduce you to Rachel Ward. Rachel will be teaching kindergarten at Tonda School, first grade.
Kindergarten.
Kindergarten, kindergarten at Tonda School. And she's coming to us with a bachelor's degree from Baldwin Wallace College in Ohio, a master's degree from Ashland University in Ohio, as well as six years of experience. So welcome.
Congratulations, welcome. Thank you.
Congratulations, welcome.
So I'm very excited to welcome our three new teachers to our school district, Samaya, Cassandra, and Rachel. And I know they are going to continue to do great things in our school district with our students and all of our stakeholders. So thank you.
Another highlight of tonight, in addition to our new teachers joining us, is celebrating success, and Member Keo has that honor.
This evening, the celebrating success will honor students in the band orchestra and choir programs at PCEP who have been very, had, who have some very significant accomplishments. Kiana Van Ness, Michael Montis, and Maggie Miles are the marching band drum majors and led the band to a third-place finish at state finals into the semifinals of the BOA Grand Nationals. Anna Mueller, Marisa Milanovich, Daniel Chandra, Ava Galetti, and Jeremy Cleary are all-state band students. Ethan Davidson and Colin Davidson, all-state orchestra students. Elise Kazmersky, all-state choir. PCEP Band Director Mike Wells, would you like to say a few words about your students?
Thank you, everyone. This really isn't about me. This is about the students and their achievements. I want to thank the entire board led by Mrs. Merritt for their continued support. The students are absolutely incredible. They really do go above and beyond in everything. We can't really teach them all in the classroom. This is, this is all about them just, you know, seeking out excellence in everything they do. You know, as music educators, we're tasked with providing students with the best possible music education. And that's, that's inside the classroom as well as outside the classroom, and that's, you know, your support of everything we do, whether that's the marching band, chamber ensembles, pit orchestra, everything that we do at the park, whether it's in the classroom or outside the classroom, is because of you, the board, and everything that you do to support us. So thank you for everything, and thank you for supporting these wonderful students.
Thank you. On behalf of the Board of Education, I present Anna Mueller, Marisa Milanovich, Daniel Chandra, Ava Galetti, Jeremy Cleary, Ethan Davidson, Colin Davidson, and Elise Kazmersky, Kiana Van Ness, Michael Montis, Tessie, and Maggie Miles, with the Extra Mile or Stars Award for Students with Tenacity and Achievement in Reaching Success. You guys can come up here. Jeremy? Jeremy's not here, okay. Ethan? Daniel? Is Daniel here? Is that here? Sorry. Colin? Ava? Marissa? Michael? And last but not least, Anna. So I think actually we're going to give you guys an opportunity to say a few words. Do any of you want to say anything? Not to put you on the spot or anything.
Or sing a few words?
They're like, no, thank you.
If you don't want to say anything, that's fine. I just wanted to congratulate you and come up and shake the board member's hand and the administration's hand if you need to come around this way.
Congratulations.
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 Well done.
Congratulations.
Thanks for the great job.
Are we?
Great job.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Did you want to say a few words? You were hesitating. I thought, congratulations. 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 Congratulations.
There you go.
Congratulations.
Oh, I hope they come back. Alright, we'll move on to Item Six, and that is Board Committee Reports. And we're just going to start with the President's Report. I'm going to give you a few updates. Starting with last Tuesday, the board held a special meeting where we went through the board self-assessment with the Michigan Association of School Board Consultant. And we found some areas of strength and some areas of growth that we will continue to work on to make sure that our students are successful and we create an environment of excellence. And I just want to say that I am so appreciative of my board colleagues as we work together to make sure that we are doing the best that we can for student success. And what I notice every time we meet is the dedication and commitment and passion that each one of us brings to the table. And it just makes you feel that much better that we're in this together. So I want to thank you for your time, for your energy, and we'll continue to grow and revisit that at a future date. I also want to mention that it was at the Goals Building, and it's something that we approved last year. So I want to thank Ms. Merritt for allowing us to be in that space and see the amazing environment that has been created for our 18 to 26-year-olds with special needs. So thank you for that opportunity. Anybody else want to say anything about being in the Goals Building? Because I think it was, it was just an amazing place to be. Okay. Alright, the next update is this past Saturday, Member Brooks, Member McCoyn, and I attended the School Finance and Law Seminar at School Craft Community College. And we continue to look at the state funding and the lack of funding that exists in meeting the needs of all of our kids today in the 21st century with what we have to do. So what we need to do is continue to advocate for equitable funding to make sure that we provide the best opportunity for our students and to make sure that we're looking at every opportunity to fill in those gaps because we have gaps. And when you look at what's happened to school funding since Proposal A, it's quite eye-opening. And I think part of what we miss is that we assume that people understand school funding, but a lot has changed since 1994. In fact, that's when I started my teaching career. So right as I started, school funding changed, and it is complex. So one of the things that Member McCoyn and I talked about was doing more community forums to educate the community on school funding. And also to educate the community on the School Finance Research Collaborative and some other research groups that have pointed out where we're lacking and how we need to look at more equitable funding. So I thought that was a really powerful piece. Member Brooks, Member McCoyn, would you like to add anything about that day?
No, as usual, it was very interesting. Learned a lot from it. It's just a nice, and they, nice to have the takeaways from it. And they give all the presentations, so you can look back at them later.
Yep. And I shared the presentations with all of the board members, so you should have gotten that electronic link. Member Brooks, did you want to add anything?
No, I echo what Patty said. It's a great experience.
Yeah, so imagine getting up at six, getting there 7:30 to 3:00, and it's non-stop, but it's so interesting, very fascinating. The last update I have is I want to thank the board members for joining in with the bond presentations that are happening around the community. And I want to make sure that we are out there informing everyone about the bond proposal and to be aware of it. So there are some upcoming opportunities which Ms. Merritt might mention in her superintendent update. So that is it for me for the superintendent, or the President's Update. Next up is student performance and achievement. And we have not met since last time, but we do have a meeting coming up February 5th at 4:30. And as a reminder, I talked about last time, this is going to be a deeper dive into the student assessment results. So it is going to be a two-hour meeting, and I hope that some of you can join us. Next up is Policy Committee. Member McCoyn?
So we actually met tonight, 5:30. We got out about 10 to 7:00. We had a jam-packed agenda that we did not get through, so we will be revisiting our new business February 25th. Anybody is welcome to join us. It is in the conference room on the first floor, 5:30.
Thank you. Finance and Operations, Member Keo?
So we were scheduled to meet last Thursday, but we have deferred that meeting because the bid packets that we were going to review were not in by then. We will be meeting next Thursday, Thursday, February 6th, at 4:30 PM here in the boardroom, where we expect that we will have some bid packets available as part of our upcoming construction projects, as well as we'll review a draft of the budget amendment for the first half of the year. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is our School Improvement Plan highlights from Erickson Elementary School.
Yep, and it's my pleasure to introduce Maureen Malloy, the Director of Elementary Education, who's going to introduce our Erickson group. Good evening. It's my pleasure tonight to share the highlights of Erickson Elementary. Some of our highlights are right in the audience, ready to talk with you, speak with you tonight. You'll just get a snapshot into the view of Erickson and all of the great things that are happening tonight. So please join me in welcoming the Erickson team tonight.
Alright, good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Malloy. Thank you, board members, for inviting us here to share some of the great things happening at Erickson School. Let me start by introducing the team that we have here this evening. To my left, we have, first of all, I'm Kevin Learned. I'm proud to be the principal at Erickson Elementary School. To my left, we have Mrs. Anita Wilder, who is new to our building this year. She is our new student support coordinator and doing a wonderful job. And to my right, we have Shelley McCotter, who is not only our school improvement chairperson, but a very talented resource room teacher in our building as well. Yes, the clicker. So our school improvement plan is driven by our mission and vision. And our mission was created in the spring of 2015 with the philosophy that our mission statement should be one that is easily remembered by our students. They hear it every Sunday in my phone blast as we end, "Learning and Leading, It's the Erickson Way", and any one of them can tell you what that is. And it matches the vision of our school, that providing students with the skills and strategies that will teach kids to be leaders in their own lives and target goals to build academic success. We know that these skills are critical. We added the importance of managing emotions this year when we reviewed our mission and vision last spring, as we noticed that emotional regulation and the impact that that has, not only on students socially interacting with each other in the school, but also the academic success that they're experiencing in the classroom is impacted by their ability to regulate themselves emotionally.
So for our school improvement goals...
Can you move quick?
We have school improvement goals in all core academic areas. However, there are two areas that we wanted to give some extra attention to this year based on observations of our students' needs. That first goal is a social-emotional learning goal, where the goal is for all students to demonstrate improved responsibility and character. We're focusing on this goal with the focus, we're working on this goal with the focus on trauma-informed instruction, where we are applying practices and skills and fundamental principles of a trauma-sensitive school to ensure that we are fostering a safe environment for our students that may have experienced some trauma. The second one is the Leader in Me. We are Leader in Me School, where we empower students through teaching leadership and social, and life skills. And lastly, Zones of Regulations, where teaching students to identify their emotions, self-regulate, and be problem solvers. The second goal is in reading, where we want all students to increase their reading proficiency, and we're focusing on nonfiction, specifically language, craft, and structure, as well as academic vocabulary.
So let's dive deeper into our social-emotional learning goal first. Thought that the best place to start is kind of the history, because we have a longstanding history, not only in our building, but in our district surrounding this work. And it begins with, in around 2010, when our district really launched our culturally proficient pedagogy work through courageous conversations, and that morphed into our work with Corwin, just to kind of get us started. In 2012, Erickson began our work with the Leader in Me as a response to our board's initiative that we had a character education program in every single one of our schools. So why did we choose the Leader in Me? Great question. We noticed in our building that most of our kids, or a great number of our kids, were coming to school each day thinking that life is what happens to them, and that they didn't really have a say in, as to how they were going to navigate their world. And so we thought that the Leader in Me and targeting character education program using the Seven Habits of Highly Effective People through Stephen Covey's work was a wonderful way to help students see themselves as the leaders of their own lives. In 2016, our district really launched our work in restorative practices, which really matched the Leader in Me very, very well, specifically with habit four, seek first to understand, then to be understood. Because the key to both restorative practices and that, that particular habit is the idea of multiple perspectives, and making sure that we are listening to each other in order to solve problems. And that's how we restore any harm that may be caused when conflict arises. And then last but not least, just last spring, we started working and acknowledging through our own observations that we may want to be looking at how can we help our students with some trauma-informed instruction. And we looked at Zones of Regulation as our way of doing that. We wanted to make sure that our students had ways to identify their own emotions, and our goal will be, in the future, will be to help them identify the emotions that they're seeing in their peers, to help with strategies that will help keep them in that zone that's ready to learn.
I'm going to just tip this down just a little bit. So we want to take a little deeper look into the Leader in Me. Let's talk about our private victories. Where be proactive, begin with the end in mind, put first things first. All of those are important, and then we need to support that with the Zones of Regulation. A nice little visual here. So we all live in the green zone. That's where we want to be each day. We're calm, we're ready to learn, ready to go. We do visit the other zones, the blue, the yellow, and the red. Blue, we're sick, tired, feeling out of sorts. Yellow, we're frustrated, maybe a little worried, loss of some control. Red, we're angry, we're terrified, we're yelling, hitting, and out of control. So we're working really hard with our students to understand what zone are they in, and then how to get back to that green zone. And it also kind of gives us a vocabulary too, of how intense are you feeling these feelings? I'm going to pass this around in case you want to take a little looksee at it. We also need to look at our circle of control. As Mr. Learned said, many of our children feel that life happens to them. And so with our work with this circle of control, children are able to see that they do have say, that they are the leaders in their own life, and it's up to us to teach them and to empower them. We also look at our restorative practices. It's important to have those circle times. We learn so much from our students as they learn about us, and that helps also with that community feeling of coming together in the classroom. We look at our lead measures. Again, where are we going? We need to have goals. And these goals need to be obtainable. So some children have behavior goals, some children have academic goals, and they're setting these goals for themselves, and it's up to us as the teachers to help them, guide them through that process. It's important that we prioritize. We all want to be great readers. Great, how are we going to do that? And setting those little steps along the way. We also need to look at our public victories, to think win-win, seek first to understand, then to be understood, and to synergize. We have a great many leadership opportunities at our building, but I really want to highlight our Autism Awareness Committee. This was brought to light by a student who is on the spectrum that thought, "I need to educate my peers on what autism is." And so he worked with Mrs. Rushlow, and they made the Autism Awareness Committee. Last year, they sold t-shirts, and with the money and the proceeds from the t-shirts, they were able to give each classroom a calm down or cool down kit, and it's been really helpful. We also need to think about our problem-solving and conflict resolution, as well as teamwork, synergizing. We all have to work together. While we're doing all this, we still need to make positive memories for our children as they sharpen the saw. They come to school to have fun and to make memories. Now, would you be able to play that video for me? I would like you to hear from our Student Lighthouse Team.
I like being on the Student Lighthouse Team because I like to help people. I like to, I like to be kind, and I think being kind is great, and I like putting smiles on people's faces, and I don't want to see anybody left out.
And so we give all the snacks and drinks to the teachers just to show kindness for, for how much work they do and how kind they are.
So right now, we're working on ornaments to put on the tree in the front of our school. And the ornaments will say seven habits things, like put first things first, or think win-win, stuff like that. We have a lot of the habits.
And the reason we're doing this is to make our school more brighter and to make people feel comfortable and want to go here.
So we're doing a project on our buddy bench at our school. And a buddy bench is this bench we have outside, and you can sit there if you're feeling lonely so that somebody can come sit by you and you guys can play together at recess. So what we're doing is we're making a sign that says the expectations and the do's and don'ts about the buddy bench. And we're doing a little project about the rocks, and we get these rocks and then we can paint like inspiring words on them so people feel inspired.
Explicit instruction is another, another strategy that we are using to work on our social-emotional learning goal. We are teaching and modeling building-wide expectations on a daily basis. We demonstrate this guided practice through establishing common language and expectations throughout the buildings, as well as teaching and reinforcing those expectations throughout the school year. An example of this is a school-wide assembly that we held for the upper and the lower-level grade levels, where we have explicitly taught and modeled what does expectations look like. For example, we modeled what does expectations look like in the cafeteria? Or what does expectations look like when we're outside on the playground? Even, we even modeled what expectations look like when we're going to the bathroom. The chart listed above is an example of another way that we are modeling with the explicit instruction. It's a voice level chart, and with that, it is stating pretty much what are our voice level expectations as we are in the building, building-wide. It could be a hallway, the cafeteria, the bathroom, at breakfast. So we have also established what a voice level expectation is throughout the building. In addition, restorative practices is another component that we're working on with the social-emotional learning goal. Through restorative practices, we are teaching and teaching students how to manage conflict and to restore relationships. Our staff participated in a district-wide professional development, as well as a book study on restorative practices. So we are utilizing these skills on a daily basis, and we're going to continue to do the work to restorative practices, as well as have continued conversations with the traumatized sensitive schools and... and implementation of the Zones of Regulation. So this is one of our kindergarten students. In her own words, she's sharing what the Zones of Regulation means to her.
The blue zone means sad. Green zone means happy. Yellow zone means fresh fruit. Red zone means mad.
Sorry, Mrs. McCutter, she upstaged you. All right, great. And so all of the different initiatives that you've heard from from the team here are all underneath the umbrella of culturally proficient pedagogy. All of the language and techniques shared by our team are culturally responsive by honoring the perspectives, backgrounds, and experiences of every member within our school community. Staff work very, very hard to embed culturally responsive experiences into our daily building and learning activities. Staff actively seeks to understand the cultural identities of the students that are in front of them each and every day and build those relationships. Multicultural learning opportunities for students, staff, and parents happen throughout the year. Some are listed up on the board. And I know that we've talked a lot about our work in restorative practices. So transitioning over to our reading goal. Our reading goal is targeted based on our building's assessment data. Reading can be such a broad subject area because there are so many skills that are based in reading and they're all individualized for for specific kids. But our data helped us narrow our focus into two strands in our reading curriculum that we identified as our greatest need. Academic vocabulary and the language craft and structure of our nonfiction text. So this particular slide is meant to give you a glimpse into our process for examining data, specifically in reading. Teacher spreadsheets such as this one are given out to our teachers at the beginning of the year. And they're used to look beyond just the normal percentile rank or overall RIT score of our students in their reading for the NWEA. Teachers examined, charted the RIT score for each strand which in which was in the NWEA reading assessment to better hone down the skills. These spreadsheets were allowed scores to be calculated to identify which strand was each class's greatest strength and greatest struggle. As you will see on the bottom, the green indicated strands that were that particular class's greatest strength and the red was that class's greatest struggle for that strand. Teachers could use this spreadsheet all year to target more frequent lessons in those need areas for the entire class. And they also had individual student data to identify any particular learning targets that they wanted for their individual students in front of them each and every day. In addition, all of these spreadsheets were compiled by our entire staff to identify our building's greatest strengths and struggles to identify what us what we were going to put into our school improvement plan, which ended up to be the academic vocabulary and nonfiction language craft and structure.
So when we think of reading, we need to teach it, of course, with fidelity. We got to get in there and really work hard. And Reader's Workshop allows that. We are able then to look at strategy groups and those lead measures. And also our learning targets. I can, dot, 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 so I can. So that any child that's in there knows why we're doing what we're doing and that they're not a passive learner, they're they're right there with us knowing why we're doing this lesson. We also needed to look at our nonfiction instruction. And one way that we're doing that weekly is with Scholastic News. And we're doing that during Reader's Workshop. And it helps the children to understand the world around them in a language that they can understand as children. As Mr. Leonard said, we are really working hard with our academic vocabulary and our sheltered instruction observation protocol. We're fortunate to have two ELD teachers and two ELD parapros. I feel very grateful for that. We also have technology. We have smart boards, one-to-one devices. Read write for Google. We were able to start that pilot last year. And it has helped our little ones, even with their tiny voices. It picks up their voices and allows them to see themselves as writers. They have a strong voice. We just had to give them a way to use it and to see it. We also have Epic. And then my favorite handwriting without tears, the wet dry try. We got to get those little fingers ready so they can form those letters and numbers. So they too can see themselves as writers and readers.
MTSS. So additionally, to help meet the needs of our students in reading, we have a multi-tiered system of support in place. Our MTSS team meets weekly where we review targeted goals and strategies that were selected to support students' success. Support is provided by classroom teachers, English Language Development teachers, math and reading interventionists, as well as a full-time counselor. We frequently monitor progress of the support plans and they are updated six to eight weeks.
And of course, our school benefits greatly from our parent and community partners. Our active PTO is so responsive and always is looking for ways to support our students, staff, and parent populations through school events, volunteerism, chaperoning, and so much more. I know one of the initiatives that they're focused on right now is trying to get water bottle filling stations into our building to replace some of the old water fountains that we've had that are a bit outdated. We also enjoy many community partnerships. There's many that are listed right there, but the one, there are two that I'd like to highlight. The third one down, the Plymouth Literacy Council runs our EL conversation group. Now, this is a group that meets at Erickson School in our lobby every Monday morning. And the goal of this group is that we welcome any parent in our school community that is working to to improve their own English language skills, that they're practicing their use of English. And so the Plymouth Literacy Council meets with them. They're able to answer any questions, not only about English, but about the district. And they've, it's been a really nice partnership that we've used for the last two years. The other one I'd like to highlight is also a two-year, we're in our second year of doing this. And that's the Plymouth High School Football Mentor Program, which you'll see the picture on the top. So this is the second year we've run this program. And the idea was, we wanted to bring some of our own high school athletes into our building to help anybody who, we have a number of kids in our building that see themselves as student athletes first. And helping them see the connection between the classroom and the athletic field is so important at a young age. It really matches our work in goal-setting. So every day, the football mentors come in and we meet. They'll connect with our students. They'll start working on the academic goals that the students have identified. And they they are practicing together towards those goals. The lead measures that they've selected. So basically, they have a goal to improve in a particular subject area. And then their lead measures are, so what am I going to do in order to meet that goal? So they practice that. Then the second half of the time, they go outside and they're playing together under the supervision of the adults within the building. And they're practicing their lead measures for a teamwork goal. So all kids wanted to go to, I want to score 10 goals in hockey this year. But that wasn't the idea. We changed that paradigm to talk about, how are you going to be a better teammate? How are you going to build up the rest of your team? Because your team will only be successful if everybody is succeeding. And so that's the work they're doing each day. So this is our last slide. And we really wanted to include as many of our students in our presentation as possible. But we also recognize, and we wanted to honor the fact that this could be past our students' bedtimes. And you know, I've been to board meetings before and I know sometimes they can run a little longer and I didn't know how many people would be here. Plus, we know we're in the wintertime. And in the winter, weather does happen from time to time. So we chose to go this route. The book that our students have in front of them is a very special book to to our building. This is a book that all of our staff reads out loud on video to send off our fifth graders at the end of the year as they move on to middle school. And so this was a book that our kids wanted to read to you. Now, it's a six-minute video and I recognize you may not have time tonight to do that. It is in your board packet. So if you'd like to see it now, that's great. If not, we do understand and you do have that and we hope you enjoy it.
Can we get a snippet of it?
Absolutely.
Congratulations, today's your day. You're off to great places. You're off to nowhere.
You have brains in your head, you have feet in your shoes. You can steer us in any direction you choose. You're on your own and you know what you know. And you are the guy who'll decide where you need to go.
You'll look up and down streets, look over with care. About some, you will say, I don't choose to go there. With your head full of brains and your shoes full of feet, you're too smart to go down any not-so-streets.
And you may not find any.
Go, or the mail to come, or the rain to go, or the phone to ring, or the snow to snow, or waiting around for a yes or no, or waiting for their hair to grow. Everyone is just waiting.
Waiting for the fish to bite, or waiting for wind to fly a kite, or waiting around for Friday night, or waiting perhaps for their Uncle Jake, or pot to boil, or a better break, or a string of pearls, or a pair of pants.
Hope you have a chance to enjoy the the rest of that video. They did a really nice job. And it it shows the effort that they're putting in. All of the, some of the students are strong readers, some are practicing and developing readers. Some are limited English speakers. And they're all working so hard towards being much better readers. So thank you so much for inviting us here and we're happy to take any questions that you have.
Thank you so much. Questions, comments? Member Berninski, did you want to? Member Kehoe, okay. Go ahead, Member Kehoe.
So my question was actually on the Zone of Control. And I noticed in the red zone, it had elated.
It had what?
Elated.
Yep. So would you like to speak to that? You are, you are.
I want to. So when students are elated, they have a loss of some control. We think of it more as being overstimulated, where they're just so excited. They're over the top. They don't hear anything else, they're having a party for one. And so we need to help them. And sometimes they're able to help themselves get back into that green zone and ready to learn.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Member Berninski?
So I first just want to commend you on all the great things that are happening at Erickson. It's just wonderful. I was wondering if you could, one of you could, talk about what it means to be a trauma-sensitive school.
Anybody want to take that? Okay, I've got it. So students, a great number of students that come to school each day or each day across the country have experienced things that could be traumatic events in their lives at a very early age. And the impact that that has on their readiness to learn, their ability to learn in that moment, is impacted by the experiences that they bring from outside of school. You know, we've, we've talked about two, at the, at opening day two years ago, we talked about the backpacks that students bring to school. That is directly tied to trauma-informed instruction. If students have experienced trauma, we want to make sure that we are giving them a calm place. If they're not sure how to manage those emotions, we're trying to teach them how to do that. Because nobody wants to feel out of control. And if we can get them in a place where they're feeling more in control, they're going to be better ready to learn and they're going to be more successful academically and socially within school.
Thank you. I I know that as a board, we've talked a lot about childhood trauma. And so I'm glad to see that you're doing this work, so thank you.
Thanks. Other board members? Yes.
That was excellent. I'm so excited, I'd like to go back to school.
Come on over anytime. Thank you.
Member Lazarwitz?
So you make a phone call every Sunday since you've been the principal?
So, so what ends up happening is we have the automated phone system that's used for snow days or whatever. Buildings have the ability to do that. So I record a phone blast that goes out at 2:00 every Sunday to our entire school community. I've been doing this for quite a while. It's been very effective. Because we found that communicating with families, not every family gets their information or prefers their information the same way. So by getting a phone call, they will hear what the schedule of events is for that coming week. Sometimes there's a positive message about something that we're working on, a reminder, something that might be happening at the district or building level that goes out at that time. In addition, they have the ability to go to the website. And my script for the phone blast each week is put on a story on the front page of our website. And it is also emailed out to every family when, at 2:00 on Sunday as well.
I like that.
Thank you.
Very good, yeah.
Other question, comments? Okay. I just want to thanks Member Lazarwitz for asking that question because I did not know that. So it's great that you're doing that because you're giving parents opportunities because emails get flooded and you may read it and then you forget about it. But then you get this great phone call, which is a nice reminder, so thank you for that.
Thanks. The inside joke is, yeah, I'm the voice of Erickson School and I interrupt your weekend every Sunday, but.
Yeah, I'm sure they appreciate it.
They seem to like it, yes.
I do have a question. In one of the slides, there was something about Epic. Could you tell me what is Epic?
I don't know if I can do it justice. To be, I'm sorry, I'm stepping on you. Epic is a program that our children use. It is at their level. The teachers can set a level for them. And then the children go on, whether it's their Chromebook or their mini iPads, and they're able to work at their level. And then they continue through the levels. But us teachers have a way of seeing not only what are they doing, but what questions are they answering correctly? What questions are they struggling with? Do they understand the concept? And so if not, we can go back and take a small group and reteach that.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to, I'd like to add one piece. One of, it's very important that we're continuing to give students more and more opportunities to learn or to read. You know, putting literature in front of them. And so sometimes kids preferred in the book form and we still want that. But you know, reading in a technology form is becoming more and more preferred by by even students. So giving kids multiple opportunities to access literature is part of that.
That's great. Thank you. Any other comments, questions? All right, we thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next up is citizens' comments. And I have one from Aiden. Are there any other citizens' comments? You know the routine, three minutes?
Hello, I am Aiden Morgan. I am a student at Salem High School as well as a member of this community. As all of you know and many of the viewers at home know, there is a bond proposed that includes a renovation of the Gloria Logan Auditorium for Performing Arts. That would be absolutely huge for the theater community, but you have all heard this many times before from me. So I'm going to talk about the other aspect. There is the Allen DeBois Little Theater at Canton High School, which is where half of the park players hold their shows. So, and that is a very, I wouldn't say rundown, but it is not in the best quality. There is a lot, the chairs aren't the greatest. We have to have a lighting board in the back and the wires are everywhere. That, and it's hard to get them under control because there's no, not a really system for them. We have to build all our, all our sets like on the stage and it largely limits both classroom space as well as like performing spaces when it's not finished, as well as everything the Little Theater is used for by the school, by other people that besides the theater. So I would like to bring attention to that aspect, how that is also in need of attention, not just the Gloria Logan. While it is phenomenal that. While it is phenomenal that the Gloria Logan is getting the attention that it is, there is also more to it and I want to, I want to make sure that it's not forgotten about. Since I am an advocate for the arts and while I primarily spend my time talking about theater, I still have some extra time, so I'm going to talk about something this Friday. There is a Arts Benefit Concert. I believe it is at the Canton Little Theater, which is funny enough because I was just talking about that. It is at 7:00 PM and the proceeds go towards the arts. Typically, in the past, they have gone to, like, benefits, like, helping other stuff. But because of legal reasons, I have heard that that's not quite possible. It's still in the works, so by Friday, things might change. And if things do change, the benefits entirely go to Australia to help with the Wild Bush fires and help the people there. So, this is a good way to help support the arts. Just showing up, giving your support, watching and enjoying. Thank you.
Thank you.
Aiden, what kind of concert is it? As you said, it's an Arts Benefit Concert. Is it a music concert?
It's, it's all sorts of stuff. So like, there's music. I don't, I'm not a part of directing, so I don't know the specifics. I'm sorry.
It's actually a benefit for the Arts Academy. And just to clarify Aiden's message, it's at the Canton Village Theater on Friday night at 7:00 PM.
Got it.
Yeah, and it features all of our Arts Academy students in various mediums. Very cool.
I appreciate that clarity.
Sure.
Thank you. All right, next up is administrative reports and recommendations, starting with the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. And I'd like to thank Aiden, although he was here to shine a light on advocating for the arts, I think he's also shining a light on the various needs that we have throughout our district. So it's great to hear from a student voice that we have needs and they are great. And we have an opportunity to go before the community on March 10th, 2020, to take a look at our 10-year plan. And through a bond, $275 million with zero increase to the mileage rate will allow opportunities in our programs for enhancements, renovations of spaces that you've heard about this evening from Aiden in terms of our Gloria Logan Theater, as well as continue the work that we've done in the Little Theater because we still have needs to address in those areas. Site improvements, athletics, activity improvements, program enhancements. When we looked through our guiding principles, it was about equity, making sure that every single student, 17,300, have an equal experience, an equitable experience in each of our buildings regardless of the name of your school, the PCCS experience. Having an opportunity to address our technology, having an opportunity to refresh our bus fleet. There's so many incredible things that we want to educate our community about. I want to invite everyone that is able to come out to coffee with Monica tomorrow, that will be at the Salem Rock Cafe, a place that we brag about, but can also, is in need of some renovations and continued renovations, things that we can do with 2020 bond. So, that is going to be tomorrow at 5:30, am I correct, Nick?
You are correct.
Rock Cafe, open to the entire community. We also have another opportunity, February the 19th, where we are holding a community forum to discuss the details, really unpack that bond 2020. And that will take place at the Canton Little Theater. It will, Aiden, give people an opportunity to see the theater and see some much-needed improvements that can take place. That will be Wednesday, February 19th, 6:30. And there's another event at 7:45 that same evening. Multiple opportunities for us to get out. We have a very short time period to do so, but we want to make sure that we're providing education to our community about school funding because that is something, as you heard, is very confusing for some. We want to really illustrate that we receive the lowest per pupil state aid. We're still able to do incredible things with that state aid just because we've been fiscally responsible. But we must maintain a competitive edge and we can't do everything with that limited, excuse me, excuse me, amount of funding. So an opportunity to address some of our needs will take place through bond 2020. So come out, get more education. If there are places that you would like for our team to come and share this information with the community, let us know, all hands are on deck. I want to thank our board members for being in attendance. This is your month to be recognized. We want to recognize you every day because you are here, you advocate for our students, you are present to do what it takes to make sure that our students have an incredible experience here in PCCS schools. And to that end, last board meeting, we celebrated you locally. I wanted to make sure that we had an opportunity to continue that celebration through the sharing of resolution. This resolution was actually approved by Wayne County Regional Educational Service Agency. That's Wayne RISA. It was adopted on January 15th, 2020. I'd like you to join me and I'm going to share this on your behalf and on Wayne RISA's behalf. Whereas, the Boards of Education of the 33 constituent school districts of Wayne County promote quality education for all children attending their local schools. And whereas these committed public servants demonstrate dedication to their civic duty and voluntarily contribute countless hours of service on behalf of students of Wayne County and their communities. Whereas the Wayne County School Boards are strong advocates for the needs of their students and their communities and with policymakers in Lansing and Washington. And whereas Wayne County School Boards regularly do all they can to ensure academic success for all Wayne County schools. And whereas Wayne County School Board Members support and participate in both community and school events, volunteering their time and resources. And whereas Wayne County School Boards understand the importance of a quality education for its youth and recognize that this is the most important factor in the success of our local communities, state and country. And whereas local control continues to play a vital role in the success of public education. And whereas the State of Michigan and the State Board of Education have declared January 2020 as School Board Recognition Month. Now therefore be it resolved that Wayne County Regional Educational Service Agency, Board of Education in the spirit of School Board Recognition Month, recognizes, celebrates and commends the dedication, contribution and leadership of the Wayne County School Boards of education presented and adopted January 15th, 2020. Please join me once again in celebrating our School Board Members. Thank you for all you do. And three short board meetings. We will be here together March 10th. And hopefully, we have an opportunity to talk about the transformation that is in store for Plymouth Canton Community Schools. Thank you.
Thank you. That was great.
Thank you.
Next up is Student Services. Kurt?
Thank you. We are asking for your consideration as first reading this evening the recommendation for non-resident school of choice under the 105, 105(c) of the State School Aid Act for the 2020-21 school year. The Board has to annually elect whether or not to participate in the school of choice program. Section 105 of the School State, State School Aid Act allows us to accept students in Wayne County. Section 105(c) allows us to accept students in counties that are contiguous with Wayne County. We, as a district, have been participating in school of choice for the past eight years. So this would be our ninth year participating. The resolution before you is consistent with what we've been using the past few years, accepting kindergarten students through the eighth grade, up to 250 seats. If approved, the process allows for a 30-day advertising window and for a 30-day application period. And then after the 30 days of application, we would begin placement. This also allows our district to give preference to those that have siblings that are currently attending in the district. We have approximately 744 students that are currently attending our district through the school of choice program. With this consideration, you'll see that it's up to 250 students with a minimum of one seat per grade level. By law, we have to enroll at least one student per grade level that we advertise, but we can go up to 250 students total. It's important, as we try to get out early and people have choice and we want to make sure that they are considering us. We want to advertise early. But we're still at the preliminary stages when we're looking at our available seats by those particular grade levels. As we go through the process of staffing, we look at our roll-up numbers, we look at our projections and we determine exactly how many seats we'll have available at each grade level. By looking at this resolution, we would only accept students in grades where we have available seats.
Member Kehoe?
Kurt, you mentioned that we are required to take a minimum of one student per each grade. If, for example, we didn't have any availability in a particular grade, does that mean we're in violation?
That would be correct.
Okay, and then alternatively, if no one applied in a particular grade level, does that mean we're in violation?
I don't believe so because we are, we're offering it and we have the ability to accept it and if we didn't have any, it wouldn't be a violation.
And we've always had confidence that we've always had at least one seat available in each grade, so it's a non-issue.
Oh, it hasn't been an issue.
Okay.
Last year, we had over 400 applicants.
Okay, but we always have had at least space for, to accommodate them. So we, and even in past years when we offered 250 seats, we always had, or up to 250. It wasn't that we oversubscribed our district. We were always using the available seats that were theirs.
Correct.
Thank you.
Other comments, questions? I just want to say I appreciate the package that was sent in board notes with regard to the data. So, that was great to look at and I appreciate even the data of the details of the numbers, absences and everything else. So thank you for the details on that.
You're welcome.
Okay. Next one?
The next one, sure. This is consider approval of a resolution for enrollment of non-resident students of PCCS employees. We are asking you for consideration as a first reading this evening the recommendation for non-resident employee choice for the 2021 school year. The Board has to annually elect whether or not to participate in the non-resident employee program. This program allows any staff member the ability to bring their student to the district regardless of the district which they reside. Last year, we had approximately 15 staff members that chose to bring their child to Plymouth Canton.
Question?
And when we do this, do we consider the students of non-resident PCCS employees first before we open those up to external?
We do.
Okay, great, thank you.
Other questions, comments? Okay, that's it. Thank you.
I just want to add that you have to annually elect these two, but a third option that also will take place is our intra-district choice program. And that takes place simultaneously once we advertise for our schools of choice program. This gives any of our resident families the opportunity to choose if we have open seats available to transfer within the district. And so that process will also begin at the same time if you move forward with participation for the 2020, 2021 school year.
Towards that end, Monica, how many students, or how many families, or students, I'm sorry, how many students have elected to do that?
To get back to the number of criteria.
Well, to get back with you, last year, I would say there was about 50 last year.
Oh, really? Okay. And so then those students, they don't create or lose seats in the process. It's just a shuffling of those availability there. So someone might be having a school that was closer to their work or something like that that would made it more convenient for them.
We identify those open seats as we do for school of choice. We give the families that live within the district the opportunity first. So it's not every building, not every grade level, but where we have space available.
Perfect, that's great.
And we backfill with school of choice.
Great.
And families, resident families have the opportunity to choose the school if we have open seats, but we just want to remind all that schools of choice can only choose the district. They cannot request a specific school. Though we work to try to accommodate closest to where they are located geographically, but they cannot request a school. They must request the district. But our intra-district families may request a school.
Well, that's great, that's very, that's very good. From a process perspective, do the students or do the school of choice families that are electing that, do they know what school they're getting before they have to make the decision to go?
The process we use is we, after the application period ends, we determine if whether or not we have to have a lottery. The parents are notified that they've been accepted into the district and then we have two weeks to place them. So they'll receive an email with their school that they've been selected for.
Okay, and so then they could choose whether to accept that selection or to not.
Correct.
And so if someone was, for example, in, living in the city of Canton, but, or I'm sorry, the township of Canton, but was sent to Farron, they may choose because of the distance that that was, they may not want to make that drive. Or conversely, somebody the other way around.
Correct.
Okay.
And I, when I do placement, I look at the schools that are closest to their homes. So if they're coming from, let's say, Novi or
Mics are working. Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you.
All right, any other questions, comments?
Just one more point. We had 60 last year.
60 inter-district.
Inter-district, yes.
Okay, great, that's
That was fast.
That is right at your fingertips.
All right, we are moving on to last item, number three in letter F, Finance and Operations. Debbie?
It's an action item, do you want to take action first?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking for a motion for action item 20-01-35.
Madam President, I move that we consider approval of resolution for contract award from the Michigan State Police MSP School Safety Grant Project. This will be a final reading. The action item is 20-01-35.
Second.
Motion was made by Member Kehoe and seconded by Member Brooks.
Thank you. Thank you. So, this is a contract award for the Michigan State Police School Safety Grant. On March 1st, 2019, we applied for and received notification On March 1st, 2019, we applied for and received notification that we had won a part of the competitive grant that was spread amongst school districts across the state of Michigan. The grant is for approximately $384,369. PCCS was responsible to match that at 25% or 128, 123, for a total of about 522. On September the 10th, 2019, action item 20-0912, this Board of Education approved moving forward to the design and bid process. And once we did that, on Monday, December 2nd, we opened the sealed bids and reviewed them and tabulated them. The original barriers that were discussed at that time were cost prohibitive, so we, after evaluation, found some barriers that were similar in crash rating to the tune of K12 or 50 miles per hour, and would eliminate some of the other in-ground insulation costs that were, again, much more expensive than originally anticipated. So with all this, the Finance and Operation Committee met on January 9th to discuss it, and this Board of Education discussed it again on the previous board meeting on January 14th, to move forward with the suggested barriers to the total project cost of $768,792, with grant funds totaling about half that, or $384,369, and then now increasing the match to a total of 384,423.
And so just to provide some context, this provides vehicle barriers to the interior of the, the park, so that the students' vehicles can't get into that, that area without going through a highly secure gate, as well as some environmental barriers like bollards and landscaping that will be present, present there, so that in the interior where the students are transitioning during passing time, that kind of protects that area. And the, we had a really great collaborative discussion at the, at the FNO meeting with some suggestions by, by Member Lazarowitz, on how we could address the entire process. So we're excited to be bringing this thing forward and to, you know, upgrade the security that we have overall. This is one step in security, we've continued, we've made previous security improvements throughout the district and at the park, and we will continue to make additional improvements in the future. We're also going to be going out for additional grants through the MSP, because we have other security needs, and they have been generous in how they've supported the unique conditions that we have both at the park, as well as throughout the district, and we hope to see that happen further in subsequent cycles.
Thank you for that background. Questions, comments from colleagues? Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes 6-0 for action item number 20-01-35, approval of resolution for contract award, Michigan State Police MSP School Safety Grant Project, final reading. Thank you. All right, we're up to letter G, action items and discussions. So I just have two items. One is, we will continue to work with Len on trying to get a date to have him come back and finish up some of our board governance work that we started, I want to say in August?
Was it October?
October, okay. And given how busy our schedules are, I think we're going to wait till maybe mid to late March, so more to come on a date. And then also to put some of our work session through MASB into some actionable items, I'm looking for two volunteers to work with me on formulating some language that we can bring back to the larger board in terms of how we want to put together a process for Robert's Rules and running efficient meetings. So rather than taking up three, four hours of board work time, if we could just get two volunteers to work with me, we'll bring that back for, you know, ideas, feedback, and then kind of move from there. How does that sound with my colleagues? You like the idea of?
Yeah.
A small group?
No.
Do I have two volunteers? Member Brooks? Okay, Member Lazarowitz, thank you.
Welcome.
All right, so we'll get to work, and when we're ready to propose something, we'll bring it back to the larger board.
There we go.
Great, thank you so much. All right, we're moving up to board follow-up questions. And looking at the follow-up questions from last item, there are two of them, we're looking for a follow-up with the nine students that would be subject to retention, that's still outstanding.
Should be coming, I believe, in this Friday's news.
Nope, we've got to wait until, we have the, we want to wait till the next results from the NWA and the BAS, because the fall results will just mirror the spring results, which is what it was based on. So as soon as we have that second round of results, we'll be able to come back and show you what their growth was.
What's the timing for that?
Coming up, it'll be in the next month or so, so. Yeah, when we close the window, so I was trying to think of exactly, the window will close in the next few weeks.
Okay. And the next outstanding item is information on the AP Physics course, which we need to bring to SPA. Given that our February 5th agenda is packed, we're going to put this on the March agenda item, so we'll come back to the board with that information. Okay, and I don't believe there are any outstanding questions from today, since Kurt answered.
Yeah.
Member Kehoe's question?
Yeah.
Okay, did I miss anything? Yes.
On the ball.
That's great. All right, I am looking for a motion to adjourn.
Madam President, I move that we adjourn the meeting.
I second it.
Thank you. Motion was made by Member Kehoe, seconded by Member Lazarowitz. We are adjourned at 8:13. We have to vote still, I thought?
I think, do we have to? I can't remember, that might, when you're Robert's Rules, you guys will remember.
Okay, that's what we're going to figure out. All in favor?
Any debate, but I still think we have to vote.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you, we are adjourned at 8:13. Motion passes 6-0.